...of the United States of America and through Republican Party, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, and I thank you for coming out to our first budget session. This evening, we will have a presentation from the Board of Ed as well as the Town Manager. There are going to be some rules for this evening. The first presentation will be by the Board of Ed. Once the Board of Ed is finished presenting, the Town Council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Once the Town Council is finished asking questions, we will have statements from our residents. Residents can ask questions of the Council but not the Board. There is a sign-up sheet. Everyone will have approximately three minutes. There is a timer. I'm going to ask us to all be respectful of each other and the timer. Thank you. And if there needs to be, there probably will be some follow-up questions from the Council. The Mayor's prerogative is to take breaks if we need to, to inhale and exhale if we need to, so that we can have a very productive presentation. At this time, I'll turn it over to the Board of Ed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor Curtin, members of the Town Council, and our Bloomfield Before I begin, I just want to echo some words coming from our former First Lady, Michelle Obama, who often used the term that rather than go low, we will go high. It's my full intention, our full intention here tonight, to stay on the high road, even in the midst of accusations that have been directed towards our Superintendent of Mismanagement, Malfeasance, you pick the words, that have been directed in his direction. We're going to try to maintain and stay on the high road. Our overview this evening will be moving towards excellence. We're going to talk about the context in which the 2019-2020 Board of Education-approved budget was developed. We will review the impact of focused and responsible spending on improved achievement in academics, athletics, and the arts. The reality of the cost of educational funding, we will review the cost drivers that have impacted the 2019-2000 Board of Education budget. Now, let me step back for a second. In case you didn't know, let me introduce myself. I am Donald Harris. I am the Chair of the Bloomfield Board of Education. I am the first of four speakers that will be here this evening, but I do want to recognize all of my Board members who are in attendance, and I thank you for being here. It's been our intent to change Bloomfield's trajectory ever since, basically since I came to the Board, since Dr. Thompson came to the Board. And I know you have heard a lot of these comparisons before, but I think it's worthwhile to keep repeating them, to keep reminding you of where we have been and where we have gone up to this point. But in 2011, Bloomfield High School was one of the five lowest-performing high schools in the state with a 74% graduation rate. 2018, Bloomfield High School was recognized by U.S. News and World Report, actually 2017, as one of Connecticut's best high schools. And the current State Department of Education data shows us at 90% graduation rate, well above state average. Increased achievement is synonymous with real estate development in most successful communities. The success of the school system has brought renewed confidence, pride to our community, and spurred a generational boom in commercial and residential real estate, as evidenced by the increased communications received from real estate agents about an increased activity of persons seeking homeownership here in Bloomfield, not moving out of Bloomfield. Our school district has become an asset as opposed to an adversary. Bloomfield schools continue to be on the rise. We have been praised by the Governor, the Education Commissioner for his leadership and student performance increases. We have been recognized as a model in school and district improvement, both regionally and nationally. We are very fortunate to have the 2018 Superintendent of the Year for the State of Connecticut, who was recently featured in the National School Administrators Magazine. We have, through his leadership, been responsible in budgeting with an average 1.14% increase over the past eight years, where there were four consecutive years of 0% increases. I know you've heard that before, but it's worthwhile repeating. Four consecutive years of 0% increase. That was 2012, 2013, 2014, and 2015. This year has been an aberrational year, but you need to know that this year's budget includes a rise in insurance costs, a rise in magnet school and special education tuition, of which we have no control, and a subsequent rise in transportation, which by law, we are obligated to pay for. Additionally, greater resources have been placed in the classroom as a result of increased parental input in collaboration with our school leaders. So that is the beginning, and now to talk about the return on investment, our Superintendent, Dr. James Thompson.
Good evening. While there is always room for growth, we can take pride in the substantial achievements that our students and staff have realized in academics, athletics, and the arts. Mr. Harris mentioned when I began my tenure as Superintendent in April 2011, the graduation rate at Bloomfield High School was 74%. In the past eight years, that number has grown to 90%. This represents a 16 percentage point increase. This increased graduation rate speaks to the Renaissance for our flagship high school. In 2017, we earned accolades from the U.S. News and World Report National High School Rankings. More evidence of the sea-change lies in the increasing performance on the SAT. We showed double-digit increases in reading, writing, and math in 2018. This growth was recognized and celebrated by the Connecticut Department of Education and the College Board, the national organization that administers the PSAT and the SAT. We have seen growth in student performance on the Smartest Balance Assessment as well. While we are diligently working to make sure every student can demonstrate academic growth from year to year, it's important to note that in grades three, five, and seven, we saw double-digit increases in math. In grades three and seven, there were double-digit increases in English Language Arts. All these increases contribute to Bloomfield Public Schools' Rising Performance Index. That's a recent report that we just received from the State Department of Education that shows an increase in three points this year in Bloomfield, fortunately, is exceeding the state average. And while we take pride in all the accomplishments of Bloomfield Traditional Schools, our Magnet Schools, or Magnet School, Global Experience Magnet, has been recognized as a school of excellence by the Magnet Schools of America. Its students from this school have been to Europe, Asia, South America, and South Africa in recent years. Bloomfield Whittenberry Early Childhood Magnet School was recently accredited with honors, earning top scores in all assessed categories from the National Association for Education for Young Children. Moving on to athletics, our teams have won three state titles this school year alone. The arts have also shown a revival in recent years. Our annual community art walks and the Bushnell Arts Performances have been well-received. As we move on to the presentation of the 2019-2020 Board of Education-approved budget, I want to emphasize that this proposal endeavors to keep the momentum going for our students and this community. The budget before you was developed with the input from parents through a collaborative process with school leaders. Through the months of November and December, a series of meetings were held to ensure that ideas from our families were integrated into the budget. The budget leverages the good and prudent suggestions from our families to add strategic resources to our schools and classrooms that enhance student performance. Chairman Harris stated earlier, "The district has delivered very modest increases over the past eight years with four consecutive years of 0% increases. To ensure that we continue to grow and innovate, we aggressively pursue grant funding and community partnerships so that opportunities would remain strong for our students." For example, we have valuable partnerships with the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving and the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford, and these relationships have extended the school day for learners. Now is the time to make significant investments in our school district, sustain positive momentum, and continue our growth. While we understand that this is a difficult budget year, it's also an opportunity to clearly state that we prioritize education in this community. Before I welcome our Chief Operation Officer, Mr. William Guzman, who will discuss the 2019-2020 Board of Education-approved budget, and Mr. Dominic Greco, our Director of Accounting, they will lead us with an overview of the various budget drivers and some difficult but manageable mitigation measures. And I just want to say something for the record, that integrity and transparency are core values of my administration. We have a track record of accountability and improving student performance with very modest annual budget increases. And any suggestions to the contrary are quite frankly insulting and unfair. So having said that, I ask Mr. William Guzman to come forward and guide you through the budget document.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, and good evening, members of the Town Council. The budget for 2019-2020 requests approved by the Board of Education totals $46,791,571. This represents an increase of $4,629,406, or a percentage increase of 10.98%. The 2019-2020 budget, in a nutshell, is represented on page 14 of your handout, and this page represents the 14 major accounts that the district functions under. And we report to the Board of Education on a monthly basis on the status of the budget using these 14 major accounts. You can see that the first three accounts, salaries for certified personnel and non-certified personnel, and employee benefits, makes up approximately three-quarters of the entire The next page is a breakout of those 14 accounts, comparing the reclassified budget for current fiscal year 2018-2019 with a budget request adopted by the Board of Education for 2019-2020. And you will see in the penultimate column, the percentage, the dollar change for each of those 14 accounts, and you'll notice that there have been some reductions in several of those accounts, but there have also been some increases. And the four increases I want to talk about very briefly are the ones, employee benefits, which is number 03, tuition, which is 08, transportation, which is 05, and equipment, number 13, 13. We're going to be getting into some detail relative to the employee benefit account to provide some clarity to the nature of the increase in that account, and Dominic Greco will do that shortly. The transportation account has an increase there of approximately 11.05%. We currently have two contracts that provide student transportation, one with Access Transportation, and the other is with the Daco Transportation Company out of New Britain, Connecticut. And those are contractual obligations that the Board entered into when we went out to bid for transportation services. Account 08, tuition, is a 24% increase in this budget. As mentioned earlier, this account is tuition payments for, one, children attending magnet schools in the Hartford area, and we were given word by Greck, who is the main sponsor of those magnet schools, that the tuition increase for next year is going to be in the area of 8%. The second element in that line, tuition, has to do with tuition that's being paid for children whose educational needs require them to be placed out of the district because of the severity of the need. On average, on average, the tuition for children attending outside facilities for their education, the special education programs, on average, is $75,000 per student. And then finally, on item 13, which is the equipment, there's a 74.97% increase in here, and this is an increase of approximately $141,000 for Chromebooks for the high school. This was an item that was discussed with the school principals and the parents attending whose children attend the high school, and there was a request for increased technology at the high school, and this number is represented by that increase. The budget drivers in detail, as I mentioned before, will be presented by Dominic Greco, the Director of Accounting, so I'll have Dominic come up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to speak to the next two slides, which you'll see up on the board. The first slide shows a breakdown of the budget drivers for next year's proposed budget. As you will see, the employee benefits account, the employee benefits accounts for 8.83% of the 10.98% increase which is being proposed. The major driver in employee benefits is health insurance, which accounts for $3.06 million of the increase, or 7.26%. I will get into more detail of what makes up the increase in the next slide. The second component, other post-employment benefits, typically referred to as OPEB, is an additional 1.10% of the increase. The last component of the increase for 0.19% is for pension and other employee benefits, such as social security and workers' compensation. The remaining cost drivers on this slide, Mr. Guzman spoke to earlier. So we will now move on to the next slide, which will bring clarity into the increase of the health insurance account in next year's proposed budget. This slide is a summary of the health insurance increase of $3.06 million, which was included in the previous budget driver slide. We have broken down the increase into three factors. The first factor is the increase of $1.59 million in health insurance costs, which this year are being funded through the surplus in the self-insurance fund, but next year will be funded through the general fund or the proposed budget. The $1.59 million consists of $766,000, $176, which the district budgeted less than claims when this year's budget was developed, by assuming that amount would come from our portion of the surplus in the self-insurance fund. The amount of $823,318 represents the Town Council reduction to this year's district's budget, which was absorbed by using our portion of the surplus in the self-insurance The second factor, which you'll see for $900,000, consists of three elements. A, the district's funding of half of the health savings account deductible. B, a reduction in benefits funding through grants, which will need to be funded through the general fund or proposed budget. And C, the additional health insurance cost to cover the additional staff, which is included in the proposed budget. The last factor is an increase of $571,000 in projected claims. I will now turn it over back to Mr. Guzman, who will finish the presentation.
In this slide, I will attempt to talk about some of the mitigation efforts by the Board of Education in terms of controlling costs, and in fact, some places, reducing costs. The first and foremost one is that this budget includes a reduction of over half a million dollars in staffing costs through salary accounts and through contracted services in the central office. That's first and foremost, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in terms of the salary accounts as well as contracted services accounts. The second item on here is the finalization of the solar panel project on the Board of Education grounds, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the Town Council for approving the final documents to ensure that that program went forward. And if you get a chance to come by the Board of Ed, come to the back. It's a very impressive array, and they've been working on it diligently for the last two and a half months. That array of paneling and the panels that were constructed a year and a half ago on the roof of the A-Race building will generate approximately $80,000 in reduced cost for the next 20 years. Given the cost of electrical utility services, I'm sure that that number will increase. The third bullet on here is the Steps to Success Program. Under Dr. Thompson's leadership, this year, we initiated the Steps to Success Program. It's a program that's housed at the A-Race School, and it services children in grades up to grade eight. And these are children that, under normal circumstances, because of their individualized educational program, would require placement in a facility outside of the school district. And before I mention the average cost of those tuition amounts, it was in the area of $75,000. So under Dr. Thompson's initiative, we established this year, our first year, a program for those children that services two purposes. One, it keeps the children in town, and two, it reduces the tuition cost. So it's our first year, and we've gone through some growing pains with it. Right now, there are 11 children that have been, that are participating in that program, so it's a benefit to them, it's a benefit to their parents, and it's a benefit to the school district as well. The next bullet is transportation contracts. As I mentioned before, we have two contracts, one with Access Transportation Services, and they mainly transport the children that require special education services. The other contract is with Daco Transportation Company, and there, the bigger company transports our children to and from school on a daily basis. We are currently negotiating with them, and we have been successful with the Access Company to get a 0% increase for next year. They had, both companies have existing contracts, so for next year, access... They had, both companies have existing contracts, so for next year, Access, through negotiation, agreed to a 0%. We are currently doing the same negotiations with DATCO Bus Company in terms of trying to get them to agree to a 0% increase. And I'll just tell you quite frankly, the quick pro quo here is 0%, and we'll look at extending your contract two or three years. But that's, that we're prepared to do with the Finance Committee of the Board of Education, but the DATCO one is on hold at this particular point, because we're going back and forth on that. And finally, health insurance. What we're trying to do is to mitigate some of the costs relative to health insurance last year in terms of the contracts for the teachers and for the administrators. We put some provisions in there that would make it more palatable for them to move from a PPO to an HISA, a high deductible, which is a little less costly, to the district, and we were successful. I think about 65% of our personnel are enrolled in the high deductible plan. The union contract negotiations, we're going forward with that with two of our other unions. These are the two non-certified unions, and at this particular point, we're going to be looking at proposals, or we'll be offering proposals, to increase their contribution rates to the either one, the PPO or the high deductible plan. We're looking to see if in fact we can get away as a proposal, as you understand, when you go to negotiations, it's a bilateral thing, but one of the proposals we have there is to get away from and into a defined contribution plan with the employee members of each of those two unions. And then finally, a wellness program. Through Cigna, we have a certain amount of money that's allocated to the district for a wellness program. One of the things that we've been utilizing that money for has been a health fair that we sponsor every year in May, and the health coordinator for the district invites a whole host of agencies to come in, talk to our employees, in an effort to promote better physical health, in some cases, mental health. And I understand that the town already has a wellness program, it's a little bit more defined. We want to follow in those footsteps too as we go into negotiations in the coming year. So those are some of the mitigation efforts. One of the other things I want to mention that's not on the list is shared services. We have, again, with the town, started negotiations, or started conversations, if you will, with some of the directors of the various departments at the town level, along with our department, and we've had several meetings, and we're hoping that as we go through this process, there'll be some ability and some savings in that area with costs, with shared services. There are many elements to this, but we're looking forward to continued dialogue with the town on this one. And then the next page, thank you. Want to emphasize again, the eight years of budget increases totaling on average 1.14%. As Mr. Harris mentioned at the very beginning, next year, 2019, 2020, is an aberration, but for all intents and purposes, it's unheard of a superintendent proposing to and a town council adopting four straight years of 0% increases. And that, I did a little arithmetic earlier today, and if it wasn't 0%, I threw in a 2% nominal increase, a 2% nominal increase in those four years that you see. The current year budget, instead of being $42.1 million, would be over $45 million as we speak today. So those four years have had an accumulative effect, understandably, on where we are today and what the district has accomplished over time. And finally, I just want to take this opportunity to tell you that we are monitoring the actions at the state legislative office. We're monitoring them on two accounts. One is to ensure and to try through our various Connecticut Associations, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, so forth and so on, to ensure that there are no more unfunded mandates coming down to the district. And if you had a chance to look at some of the proposals that are there, they're pretty impressive in terms of what they're asking school districts to do. The other side of this is to look at what kind of funding they're going to provide, what kind of increased funding are they going to provide for education cost sharing, for magnet school grants, for tuition grants. There's a whole host of grants that have been level-funded for so many years, and as you all know, it's time for the General Assembly and the Governor to stop putting some funding into education. There was a promise many years ago that funding for education in the state of Connecticut was going to be a 50-50 proposition, 50% from the state and 50% from the local government. The last I heard, that was a 38% from the state, and the balance is coming down to the local communities. So that ends the presentation, and we'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mrs. Guzman, Dr. Thompson, Chairman Harris, and all the members of the board. Thank you for being here tonight, and to everyone here in the audience and at home. Mr. Guzman, could you break down what's the cost per pupil in the district, please?
I'd have to look at the latest figure that you can get on the state website, but I would assume, and again, I'm just taking a shot, it's probably in the area of $20,000 per child.
I think it's roughly $20,000 in this fiscal year. I think in 2018, 2019, 2020 is roughly around $21,000.
I just want to, yeah, I understand if you do the simple arithmetic, yes, you can do that, but understand that the calculation of net current expenditure per pupil, there's several steps to it, there are some levels that go into it, there's some items that go into it, and there's some items that are not accounted into it. So I understand the simple division leads to that, but the net current expenditure per pupil, which is what the state uses for grants and everything else, is a little bit more complicated than a simple division.
It kind of lies at the same number that I came up with, so it's not that far off. In regards to, going back to the central office in this current, 2019, 2020 budget, you said $540,000 in cuts. Could you break that out for me, what that cuts is?
I can tell you--
The combination of that number?
Yeah, I can tell you, there were two elements, one salaries, and the other one was contracted services. I can tell you under contracted services, there's a contracted service that's being provided for the HR office, there's a contracted service that's being provided for the Director of Communications, and there's another contracted service that's being provided by a person for instructional assistance, specialist, if you will. Those are the three contracted services. The other accounts are, the other elements of that have to do with certified personnel that are in the salary account and central office. We have yet to identify which ones, because we have to go through the whole restructuring process. I can tell you that it includes two non-certified personnel, but on the certified personnel, I think it's two as well, or one, one as well.
So why would that be under central office? The 540 is what I'm referring to.
No, it's, yes, again, the central office is a generic umbrella consideration. The staffing are all located at central office. In the budget book, you're going to find them in different places, if that's your point.
Okay. Okay. So my, just a follow-up question, Madam Mayor. In regards to health insurance, my initial read on that, when it said $3.1 million in health insurance increase, when I look from this year to the upcoming year, the difference is roughly around 1.3. Can you kind of walk me through and break the pieces apart to tell me what's the actual true increase in health insurance costs, projected?
Yes, and we actually had a slide for this, and we pulled it, but I'm going to try my best. Oh, do you want to try it? I have the slide here.
Lisa, can you put that slide back up, please? I think that's the question you're referring to.
I'm trying to get to the 3.1 million.
Well, I think the 3.1 million is there right in front of you.
What's the actual cost from this year to--
The actual--
The difference in between, what's the increase?
The actual increase--
The actual increase between this current year and--
Is the two bottom figures, which you'll see there, which is the 900,000 and the 571,000, which is about a little over 1.4 million dollars.
So how, so the 3.1, what was that number?
Well, the 3.1, as I explained to you earlier, of what was done during the fiscal year, the first being that when the Board of Ed developed their budget last year--
Okay.
$766,000 was budgeted less in claims, because we assumed we were going to use our portion of the self-insurance fund surplus. I believe that the town council did the same thing as well. I was reading your budget the last couple of days, and I believe that there was a number in there for about $356,000. I'm not sure if that rings a bell for--
What, what, what are you talking about?
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to explain to him what we did in terms of the 766, and what I'm saying is, I believe that the town did the same thing with their budget for this fiscal year. I believe the town assumed that you guys were going to use 356 from the self-insurance fund, from the strong fund balance. Am I correct?
You're correct, yes.
Thank you. And the 823 is the town council reduction, which was made to our budget, to this year's, to this year's budget, which, what we did is, we said, well, we have this strong surplus, there's enough money there, so we decided we were going to use our portion to offset that decrease. So that's the 1.6 plus the 9 plus the 571 gets you to your 3.1.
So you're saying after the town council made the cuts, instead of going back and making some adjustments, we used the reserve or the health insurance reserve to, that's what we did?
Yeah, when you mentioned those adjustments to the budget--
Correct.
Those adjustments to the budget are drastic adjustments to the budget. At that particular point, we're looking at a whole host of things. We're trying to get the school year started, number one. Number two, we have, in terms of a cut or reduction of $823,000, we're looking at things that would impact ultimately the classroom, and we did not want to do that. Wanted to stay away from the classroom, and one of the ways we did it was to go to the reserve. And the reserve gave us the ability to stay away from cuts to the classroom or cuts across the district, at a time when we were trying to add resources to the district. So we looked at the 766 and the 823, the 823 in particular, as a way to mitigate impact on school classrooms.
So is it fair to say, with looking at the current budget, and you did discover 540 in cuts, probably if you had gone back at that point, you probably could have found some additional areas instead of going into--
Yeah, I mean, that's fair, and we could have. In hindsight, we probably could have done that. Lots of things we could have done, but ultimately, the 540 or the 500,000 still leaves, you know, 300,000 left. 300,000 left has a serious impact on classroom instruction. So I just want to, I want to point that out, that those little adjustments to the budget are not little when you're cut $800,000. And please understand that the prior year, we were cut almost the same amount of money, $800,000, and we went to the reserve. That was the intent, not to do some minor adjustments to the budget, but take it from the reserve, and through the management of the budget last, that year, we were able to make the full contribution to the self-insurance fund. We didn't have to go to the surplus.
The Council of golf?
Yeah, I'd like to continue with that. That does appear to be the case, that you did the same accounting reduction when you were cut by the council in 2016, '17. You made the same reclass that you did in last year with the 823, but ultimately, I think that was the budget freeze year, and you ended up being, you know, you ended up at least being on budget with the amount of money that was put in, and you did not have, you did, you made essentially or close to the full contribution to the health insurance fund. I guess what that begs the question is, when you obviously had reduced expenses, run the schools for a year, for the year in 2016, '17, and were able to make the 800, and I think it was $832,000 cut that the previous council in their budget deliberations that year made, why did you not leave that in place and immediately decide that you were going to take another $776,176, essentially the same amount in 2018, '19, the year we're currently in? So essentially, instead of leaving the cuts in place, you brought that, you brought that cut over as extra money in the 2017, or 18, '19 year. So, you know, part of the reason we're in the situation we are now with a claim of a, you know, a rise in health insurance, which is not really a rise in health insurance, it's, it paid off the amounts you did not, you reduced from the health insurance payments into the insurance fund in 2018, '19. If that cut had stayed in place, and if you had made the 540,000 or more cut, or if you'd made the 540,000 cut and done a $200,000, a $200,000 reduction in the health insurance payment, under the hope that we would have had good experience coverage, we wouldn't be in the position of having an increase now.
Well, you know, hindsight is wonderful, but looking prospectively, a couple of things. One, at year end, we have to account for every dollar that we were, that the district's appropriated. There's no surplus, there's no balance, there's no fund account that we can hold that money to. That particular year, by the way, was the year that we and the town were in a budget freeze for a long time because of the uncertainty. So that was an aspect of the method that we used, and we monitored very closely, because we weren't sure where we were going to end up at year end. And fortunately, we were able to make the full contribution. You know, to say that, well, we shouldn't have done that, we shouldn't, we should have saved it for the coming year, or the impact would have been less-- saved it for the coming year," or the impact would have been less. And I can't argue with that, you know, but again, that's all hindsight. When we went, looking prospectively at the current year budget, we informed the town council through our budget that we were going to take the 766 out of the reserve, much like the town did at the 356 level in that particular year as well. So then, we got an unexpected reduction from the town council of 823,000. And at that particular point, we're thinking, what's the best way to handle that? And at that particular point, it was either going through this adjustment of all the accounts or looking at the reserve. And I'm not sure, but I think, I don't know how many years ago, it was prior town council, when we were in a certain similar situation, I think made a recommendation, I don't know if they made a recommendation to the board chair or to the superintendent, that, "Why don't you go to and use the reserve that's there for the self-insurance fund?" And we never did that, we, it wasn't done. But that was something that I may not have been around at that time, but... So the reserve was there, we thought it was a way to go forward without impacting the school district. And certainly, you can look at a variety of things in terms of what you could have done, what you might have done, but at that particular point, we're looking prospectively.
Well, again, let me, can I, just one more question? Can I, can I just say one more thing relative to what you just told me? And I want to relate it to this year. You made the comment that you have no surplus at the end of the year, that the Board of Education is required to live under its appropriation. And that's what the budgeting process, I think, is supposed to be all about. The council does not have any control over your budget in terms of how you spend items. That's a decision the Board of, the superintendent's office with the advice of the Board of Education makes. So all we give you is a number. We don't approve any of your line items, we don't approve any of the, anything you may put in as a footnote in terms of appropriating money from reserves. We don't do that. We only appropriate a number. So I guess my question to you, and you had the slide up before, is what at this point would you consider, in terms of the spend, the amount of money you are attempting to spend this year, what would you consider your, the amount you are spending?
For this year? The current fiscal year? Well, I'm going to tell you, we have to recover the, we're going to report, at this point, we're going to report to the self-insurance fund, an amount that is 1.6 million dollars less than what was originally scheduled, if you will. Okay? Because this fiscal year has been so difficult, and I, and difficult in terms of special education costs, tuition costs. And I'll give you a, I'll give you a quick synopsis. We budgeted 32 students that were going to be placed out of district at the beginning of the year. We currently have 38. That increase of six students included three students that recently moved into Bloomfield, each requiring tuition of $100,000 each. That's $300,000 right off the bat. So I'm just giving you a slice of the impact, and that does not include transportation, because if you include transportation, it's another $100,000 on top of that. So we have increased obligations that we have to address. And if we have to transfer funds, and again, you know, we're still studying this year's budget and reviewing it on a monthly basis in terms of where we are, but we may have to go into the reserve for the extra money that's being required in order to end the year properly.
So let me just have one follow-up to that. What are your extra, I guess, you're saying you have an extra, what, 400, 500,000 of special ed costs this year? What's the total?
It's possibly that, you know, we're above your budget, above your final budget number.
Yes. Okay, then I have a question on that. Because on page 68, when you adopted the budget last year, you allocated 3.5 million to the tuition line, and I looked at the breakout, and the majority of that, or the, well, I'm going to finish my sentence and then I'll come back. You initially budgeted 3.5 million, then you reclassed it, similar to what you did with the health insurance fund, down to 3.1 million. So initially, you thought you were going to have 400,000 more of special ed costs, and that's where I should have stopped. I went back and looked at the line items, and it is in that special education cost. So I'm curious then, how you could be expecting a 3.5 million cost for that, for all of the tuitions in total, then decide to reclass it down to 3.1, and now you're 400, 500,000 over, so...
Can you answer?
And, well, go ahead.
Well, without, without taking a look of why that budget transfer was done to decrease that reclass budget, you know, we would have to take a look at that and get back to you on it, to give you the specifics of why that was done.
Well, you can, but it also looks like it's the same kind of, the same kind of pattern we see with the health insurance, where we reduce, we reclass, reduce, and therefore, it's planned to come out of the quote, "reserve." So that's just my answer.
Just on that line of question, and I may want to circle back, but it also looks like that in the certified salaries, where you have 14.6, and in your salaries, it went to 14.8. So that's an increase in salaries also on page 68. So that's a pattern that you're, that is going on. My next question is on page 70 of your budget book. I see another thing where you talk about cutting some teachers and adding some teachers, but your program has increased and your other service adjustments has decreased. What's going on there on page 70 of your, of the budget book?
In terms of the increase?
Yes, what is the program? First, can you clarify, tell me what's in the program? What is the line items in the program?
Well, I think if you go to the line item detail budget...
Yep. I'm here. Starting on 93. Tuition, insurance, communication, supplies, equipment.
You're looking for the specific detail that makes up the programs?
What's going on? It's an increase in your programs. What's going on there? Five, it's 528, and then you're increasing it 590, 5.9, probably 6 million roughly. So it's gone from 52 to 6.
Yeah, we don't have that slide in this book that shows the, that shows the detailed by line item budget for the programs?
What's, what's, what...
It obviously has to do with salaries.
So why is it, if it has to do with salaries, why is it not in the salaries category and it's in, it's class?
That is the salary category.
I'm confused, that is the salaries category. I'm very confused.
Can you show me what you're in that so we can find it on ours?
Nope, 70, here. So the programs are going, what is that?
This program?
Yes, it's increasing almost to 6 million.
Okay, so that must, that must be the same programs.
Yeah, that's separate, the 70 slide that we do. We don't put it in.
And then...
Right, but it's, what I'm saying to you is that the program represents, what I understand that represents is all different things.
The increase in special ed is less than 100,000.
Just your teachers' labor.
Okay.
Right, so it's looking at, for example, next in the day, it's looking at, summer programs, it's looking at all the things that happen outside of regular salaries.
Were you saying that you don't have this slide on there?
So basically, what happens is, it's to take, to do this, you have to take all these various accounts and sort of hone them down to something that is manageable to explain. So when you're looking at this, we're putting them into categories so that we can better explain what is happening. So we take the salary lines out because those are contracted, those are things that we have to do. And then there's other things like programs, like summer programs, after-school programs, things that are outside of your standard salary lines. So if there's increases in, for example, the hourly rate, which there are contractual increases in the hourly rate, it would be impacting. So...
Can I follow up on that, Madam Mayor? Thank you. So on page 69, you talk about the 11 additional teachers. I was hoping that you would tell me their salaries was in that, in that program budget? Where's their salaries? Because when I met with Dr. Thompson and Mr. Guzman and the Budget Director, they told me about the additional staff. I'm very happy to see that, very, very happy to see it. Right, it's classrooms, going into the classrooms, the dollars are going to the classrooms. But then I looked to figure out, they told me that a part of those 11 teachers, their health insurance was in that. So I was like, "Okay, can deal with that." But then I look and I say, "Where are the salaries for them?" Because if you look at the classroom's teachers, that's decreasing. So if you're increasing teachers, you would think that number would increase. So where are their salaries?
So if you're looking at that, that part where it's condensed, if you're looking at the line item budget, that's going to...
No, I'm looking at this budget, right? And so this page is a narrative of this page, right? And so I would like to see the 11 plus the additional six staff teachers in this description here, right here. And what I see, I don't see it.
I understand, but it is there.
Where?
Well, let me just, if I may. Well, let me, let me, if you take a look at, if you take a look at the first example on page...
Excuse me, Dolly, can you please speak into the mic, please?
Sure, sure. If you take a look at page 69...
Yes.
Under positions.
Yes.
And it says, "Case, 1.0 instructional coach." If you go to page 93...
93, yep.
Page 93.
Mm-hmm.
And you go to, 1, 2, 3, about 4, 4 down, where it starts with teacher, classroom, I.N.T.
Teacher, classroom, I.N.T., yes.
You see the next line underneath there? Which says, "Teacher, instructional coach, I.N.T."
Yep.
Do you see the zero?
Yep.
And you see the proposed, which has an increase?
70,000.
70,000?
Yes.
That's where that is.
But where's the one point, where's the math teacher, where's the psych?
They're all in here. I mean, I can sit here and walk you through this if I want, if you want to, but...
So, okay, thank you. I'll come back, circle back, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first would like to congratulate you on the last decade, really. I think it's, I go back some 50 years on the council to the 70s, and I can remember all sorts of boards, but I don't think any board has performed so successfully for a whole decade and keeping fiscal responsibility combined with improving the schools. I think you deserve a lot of credit for that, and I, I hope that you continue. I, I hope we can support you in this budget so that you can make it through next year. Thank you.
Yes, I think it's important for us all to acknowledge the fact that we're here trying to do the best we can for our children and the town and our residents and educational system. Questions are being asked because we're confronted with a serious problem of what's our taxes going to look like after we pass this budget? And that's our job. And you can say and build whatever you need into your budget, but we still have to tap the pockets of the people to make it happen. So we're asking some questions that may be a little bit difficult. We hopefully can come up with some sort of an accommodation or maybe a reclass or whatever that has to happen, but I'm not necessarily confident of that. I just want to let everybody know that we're all trying to do the best we can so as to avoid a serious tax increase in a time when physical situation in the state of Connecticut in the U.S. is very difficult. But I did have, I did have a couple of questions I did want to ask. The Board has yet to enact a defined benefit plan, as far as I'm aware, correct?
Correct.
Divine contribution plan.
Correct.
And I think this was something the town did over 10 years ago.
2003.
2003, as a way of saving some money. And I would, don't know why the Board hasn't jumped on that, but I would hope that that could be looked at.
We fully intend, we're going into negotiations probably within the next several weeks with the two non-certified unions, and our intent is to do exactly that. Put that on the table as one of our proposals. And hopefully, by some way of negotiations, get that into the contracts.
Well, I certainly look forward to that. Mr. Guzman, you also mentioned that the solar field array is under construction. Do you have any idea when that's going to start paying benefits?
I think the end of construction is scheduled for the end of May, maybe beginning of June. And then I think there's some, it may start generating some, some benefit probably late summer. Again, assuming that the construction's going on as it, as it's been planned.
But you haven't built any of those savings into the budget at the present time?
Yep.
You have or haven't?
We did, yes. You took the account, yep.
Okay, you did. One other, one other question I had was with regard to something that just jumped off the page at me because I was unfamiliar with it, was life insurance payments, a quarter million dollars. I don't know who qualifies for life insurance. Could you answer the question?
Life insurance as one of the benefits line items there?
Is that a union?
Certainly, union contracts have required life insurance to be purchased by the employee at certain levels. I don't know if there's anything else on that.
All right, well, I'll come back if other questions, thank you.
Counselor DiLorenzo?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to ask about the revenue on page 7 of the budget book. I thought I heard earlier that you said the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving was providing a grant, but I'm seeing a zero here under the 2019-20 projected budget.
That's correct. It's the funding from the Hartford Foundation, I think they've taken another, if they've gone in another direction, I think, under the new director. So the program that they've been sponsoring is now not going to be assisting us in terms of our extended day program. There's a different program that we have that's going to sort of take its place going forward, a grant.
Okay. So are you expecting to receive any other revenue other than what's listed on this page of the budget book?
Well, again, as I mentioned before, we've got to wait for the General Assembly to adjourn. And in their deliberations, hopefully, they're going to be adding some money to the education cost sharing grant, to the tuition grant, the excess cost grant. By the way, the excess cost grant is supposed to be 100% funded by law. And every year, there's a little amendment that says it's not going to be 100% funded because the state can't afford it. So what we end up doing is losing, I think on average, 38 percentage points of that. So they're only funding us at 72%. So, oh, 70%. So it's, we're hoping that through the efforts of the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, that the legislature and the governor are going to be enacting some additional funding in the grants that they have, or if they want to redesign a grant and provide the funding for it, it's even better. But the fact of the matter is, they haven't done it, and we're still way, way away from the 50-50% that we're supposed to be sharing.
Let the grant writer speak to the grant set.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this year, we were funded by the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving to finish out the year. the year.
Okay.
We've known for a while that we needed to plan ahead. So at the beginning of the school year, we wrote a Twenty-First Century Grant for the very school that the Hartford Foundation impacts. We were fortunate, we got a very high score on that grant. And with the help of my team and the people at the school, we did really well.
Yeah.
And we are able to get a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand, sorry, a hundred and eighty thousand for next year to mitigate what has been lost by the Hartford Foundation. Now Hartford Foundation still does help, for example, on the FRC, the Family Resource Center. They still support that. In addition, we will be seeking additional funding. The grant comes out, I believe I just heard it's May or June, is a new RFP that's coming out for after-school programming, which we intend to apply. We have been lucky and gotten those grants over, well, since Dr. Thompson has been here. We've been getting those grants for Carmine Aries Middle School and Carmine Aries Intermediate School. Our hope is to continue to expand that. Other opportunities that came this year was the Title IV Grant. In the past, the Title IV Grant has been minimal. This year, it has gone up. We're hoping that it continues in that trend. And then, as you know, we are constantly looking for any type of funding at all. And we are looking also, with the help of other staff in the school, to reach out to our local organizations, other foundations like the Cigna Foundation, other places where we can get that support.
Right. I think it would have been great if the Chromebooks could have been donated.
We agree.
Yeah.
We 100% agree with that.
Okay, so can I just ask a couple of more quick questions? I was looking at the Wintonbury Early Childhood Magnet School, and I do notice that the certified salaries and non-certified salaries have both decreased substantially. So is there a reason behind that? And is that reflected?
Yes, in the grant. So as things shift, we actually can move funds into the grant. And each of these schools, each magnet school, is entitled to grant funds for operational costs.
Okay, okay. So I have another question. I'm gonna hope, don't all jump over the wall at me. With regard to the eleven new teachers, has any consideration been given to phasing them in over a period of time as opposed to bringing in eleven new staff all at once? Can they be split between two fiscal years, maybe five this fiscal year, five next fiscal year, to help us, you know, reduce some of that cost?
Well, that has a lot to do with what you decide to fund the approved budget. And that will be something we may have to look at.
Okay.
So right now, we presented to you our budget for 2019, 2020, with we had considerable deliberations in terms of protecting the educational integrity of our district. And that is very, very important to us, and it's a priority. And that's really what this budget represents.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Councilor McCleary, you have one question.
Oh, yeah, eleven teachers plus seven non-certified positions. So it's a total of eighteen positions in total, yes.
Eighteen, okay. Councilor McCleary, one question.
Okay. So to follow up on Councilor DeLorenzo's question about, or statement about the Chromebooks being donated, I know in previous, the previous year, the council gave a hundred thousand dollars towards a STEM program. What has the school district done with that? And could that money be used to fund that, those particular Chromebooks?
So let me clarify that. Let me clarify that. That hundred thousand dollars was in our budget. We did not yet give it to the school because they were supposed to do a matching in that budget year, which they didn't. So that's not available to buy the Chromebooks, so there's no need to answer that question. What I would like done at this time is, I don't like information just going out there and hanging in the air. So I'm going to ask Phil to speak to the amount of money that you were talking about that came out of the surplus insurance fund. So I'd like for Phil to speak to that.
I think the question is, did the town take any money out of the reserves to help mitigate the budget that we're currently in? The prior year, I think, was adequately explained by the Board of Education personnel in the sense that we had a budget freeze in place during the FY seventeen, eighteen budget year. The eighteen, nineteen year of the town, which is where currently in, we're operating at a surplus at this particular point in time, and there may not be a need to drop or to use any of that particular money. So we'll see what happens.
So I just wanted that to be made clear because what it seemed like to me was, well, since the town is doing it, we can do it too. So I just wanted to clear the air on that because I'm seeing a whole lot of faces out there, so I just wanted to put that out. So I'm going to ask the council, just to hold the rest of their questions, I'm going to give the audience, please remember, it's three minutes each. I'm going to ask you, do we have the buzzer? So please, when you hear it go off, I'm just going to ask you to just wrap it up. So if we have a list, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and control that.
Good evening, timing of fallins, ten sixty-seven Blue Hills Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. And I heard mention of, you know, the fact that the budget did not increase over the last four years. But I know for a fact, several of the schools, specifically camps, received drastic cuts to their certified teaching staff over that timeframe. I believe the cuts totaled out over the last several years to be six hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars. And that's just in certified staff salaries. And that was based on documentation listed in their budget books, which is available for public consumption at any time. Go down to the Board and request the documents. Also, I looked at the budget increases that they are proposing, and yes, you know, myself and other parents did have the privilege of sitting down and being involved in the budget. But I don't see any of the recommendations that we made translated in the numbers that's listed here. Based on the numbers that I got via email, we proposed the certified salaries to be close to seven hundred, five thousand, seven hundred, six thousand, just in certified staff salaries. And in the non-certified staff salaries, it was two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars. And I don't see that listed or accounted for in the numbers that they proposed. When I, you know, calculate the amounts that they proposed to us via email and the amounts that they are presenting, it only looks like it's about two certified staff members and less than one non-certified staff person. And I could be wrong, but this is based on, you know, email correspondence from myself, other parents, to Mr. Guzman, you know, and the data that they're presenting this evening. So I would like to see how many teachers, you know, we're actually going to be getting based on the budget. Thank you.
Hi, Angelina Crowe, six Andre Lane, Bloomfield, Connecticut. And I had the privilege of meeting several times with the superintendent and other staff of the Board, mainly because I have a son in the high school. And I'm going to respond to one of the councilmen who asked, could we phase in these asks from the parents? We didn't ask for anything as parents. We actually sat with the principals, among other professionals at each of the schools. And these positions that they're asked, that was put into the, as parent ask, actually came from the school system. We were asked to write the letters to the superintendent from the SGC Committee that we're on, but these asks came straight from principals, vice principals, I mean, whatever they are, deans, whatever they are at the school system. So I don't want you to think that there were thoughts that we select, positions that we selected as parents. These were positions that principals, other professionals at the school system had asked for over the years. It just became more apparent because the school system, at the high school for us at least, we now have a SGC Committee, a School Governance Council Committee. And we were asked to participate in the budget process by Dr. Thompson, and we did. And so we made sure that those positions were now penned and papered to the superintendent. So please don't think that we are just willy-nilly pulling stuff out of our head and asking the town and the Board to actually implement or fund those positions. These are positions that were needed and just weren't given over the years. So it's critical that you understand that, you know. We have always been a part of asking for stuff, but we've never asked without doing our due diligence in terms of researching what the issues are. All of us who ask have students in the school system. We just don't get out of bed, get here, and scream and kick. We actually do our research. We actually meet, have met several times with the superintendent and his team, and I sat down and talked about where the gaps are in the school system. You know where the gaps are. You know what, you know how detrimental it is. We have several students who are not meeting grade level expectation. It's a little bit unfair for us to, and maybe we've been set up to, I have to say that, because it doesn't appear as if we're going to be receiving any of these bodies at the end of the day. So I feel like we're being bamboozled because it seems as if the insurance pieces are going to overshadow. And I cannot see the town giving the Board an eleven percent increase in the budget. So I'm going to be realistic. I'm going to be realistic. But I'm also going to ask the superintendent to hold his promise, not to me as a parent, but to the student that he's in charge of. We have less than three hundred students in this Bloomfield district. We pay more than twenty thousand dollars a year to school to provide education for those kids. It only needs to reflect what we pay for.
Good evening, Petrie Davis, eighty-four Englewood Avenue, Bloomfield. Okay, so I'm one of the parent that met with the superintendent. I hope, I feel that, I don't know, right now I feel that we may have been bamboozled. I hope not. But also, I was disappointed at the time at one of the meetings when we were told that it was only our request, there was no request from the Menaca Elementary and Laurel, that the parents didn't ask for anything, or the principal. And I made the comment that the superintendent should actually, even if they didn't ask for something, he knows the situation, he knows how they're doing, so he should have said, I'm in charge here, and you need this, so I'm going to give this to you. But they didn't ask, so they don't get. So parents, you need to get involved. One of the most important responsibilities for a school board is to work with the community, not just the parents, with everybody, because if, it seems like if people don't have kids in the school system, they don't care. And that's why we've been a low-achieving school district for so many years, as the chairman said, whose fault is that? You know? So the school board has to be, get involved with the community. They also need to be held accountable. It's their fault, again, they've been running the system for so many years. It's not like we don't have money. We spent over twenty thousand. When I last checked on the Ed site, it says that we spent twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars per student, and that was in 2015, so I know it went up. Another thing is, we have to, the school board, you have to be data savvy. If you're not, if you don't want to read the data or understand, do not take the job. I mean, we had, as parents, we had to get involved and understand the data so that we could, that's why I've been here for years. I mean, the data was always displayed nicely, looked good, but our kids were doing poorly, and no one recognized that. If you understand the data, you'll be able to make better decisions, you'll be able to monitor what our kids are doing, how to make, well, improvement, stuff like that. So you need to get involved because you create policies. But I never hear any policies when I come there to help the students to improve achievement. So you need to look into that. It's not our responsibility. I didn't run for the position because I don't want that responsibility. So if you take it, then you got to do your job. Otherwise, give it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors, Board of Ed members, and to the public. As a recent member of the Town Council, it was always a difficult task and looking at a budget that was presented either by the Board or by the town proper. But I don't think there's a magic number in terms of what you look at in terms of a cut. Is it eleven percent? Is it one percent? We don't know. So it has to be based on need, goods, and services. And if we have a need, we have to pay for it. And if you don't pay for it, you can't have it. So even on the town side, Mr. Shanker's talking about roads, we need to increase our budget in order to take care of our needs. So here we are with the Board. We have talked about increased staff at the Board level. And I believe in this budget, there's an increase in staff. So consequently, we should be holding the Board accountable for doing as they said. However, remember, goods and services, based on needs, this is what we have to do. And now, do I want to pay more taxes? I never did, and I don't now. However, in order to gain the kind of things that we want, we have to pay. So folks, get behind the Board, get behind the town in terms of what they're requesting. I want you to review those things carefully. Don't just arbitrarily say, oh, my God, that number is. Is the number necessary? So if it's necessary, we have to do it. Nobody's going to come in and drop a pile of money in our pockets. So please, examine carefully the numbers, whether it's Board or Town. Is the number necessary to do what we want to do? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the Board, and the Bloomfield community. I want to start by reiterating some of the things that were said tonight. First thing that stuck out in my mind was, well, parents not asking for positions. Also, something that was reiterated and mentioned several times, four straight years have had an accumulative effect of bringing us to where we are now. That was stated this evening. Four straight years has had an accumulative effect of bringing us to where we are now. Also stated this evening, lots of things could have been different. We could have done a lot of things. That's also what stated this evening. I also heard that there was no control in the special education cost. Only to say, as a retired school administrator, I'm somewhat familiar with cost and school funding. Special education controlled, it can also generate income. And in many districts, it does generate income. When you were talking about seventy-five thousand dollars a student, if you were to bring seventy, ten of those students back into Bloomfield... back into Bloomfield and educate them, reunite them, that's $750,000. Now, I don't know the 11 positions, I don't know where they're going. You have 11 positions of teachers, and you also have seven support staff. I don't know if any of them are being used for special needs students. Hasn't been said what they're being used for, or where they're going. Also, as I indicated on Monday, I'm baffled that there was no discussion publicly to review the research, or any research, reducing busing costs or teacher salaries. Still, we talk about keeping busing at a zero. We should be decreasing the busing budget. When I see kids walking a half a mile to school, when I see empty buses entering the high school and leaving Carmen Eras, then we should be reducing that budget item, not looking at a zero increase. Rising cost of healthcare, as I mentioned Monday, that didn't spring out of nowhere. There should have been attention given to that budgetary item on an ongoing basis. Having a zero increase every year looks great on paper, but at the end of the day, now we're paying for it. And we haven't even addressed teacher salaries or contracts. Now, 7.9, and let me just be clear on my facts, because when I looked at the Bloomfield Messenger, it indicated that the healthcare cost was going up 7.43%. However, at the last budget meeting, at the last board meeting, they said 7.9%. Just telling you what I read. In addition, we're talking about, as I said, with busing, there needs to be a greater look at that, there needs to be more attention to detail. When I look, that's a buzzer, I can't be three minutes already. Seriously. All right. Well, I think I got my message across. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fadonzy Graham, days 89 Wentonberry Avenue. The bottom line is this, for the four years that there wasn't an increase, services, teaching staff, and resources were decreased at every single school across the district. 2015, 16, they started talking about the increase in their healthcare. They've been screaming this for some years now. And when they initially started talking about that, I told them that they needed to find a new broker, and they needed to go out to bid. Part of the core problem here is that there are no checks and balances, okay? There are no checks and balances from central office, there's no checks and balances at the Board of Ed, okay? And up until this round of town council, and it may have been one long ranger some years ago that's no longer here, that tried to hold people accountable. But I thank you all for asking the questions that you've asked, scrutinizing the budget in the manner in which you have, because very few have done that, okay? From previous town councils, as well as Board of Educations. Over the years, the only increase has been towards their salaries. Nobody negotiates on behalf of these kids, but the few parents that you see here, budget after budget after budget, week after week after week, okay? They all got pay increases last year, from the principals, Dr. Thompson, everyone within his cabinet, and central office. So I'm curious, and so who they're going to take from in central office when they built it into their contract negotiations with that upper anchelon last year, okay? Now, in terms of the parents, the parents ask, I doubt it. Because by the time this money roll out, some people in this room have intentions of being with the state, okay? And when that happens, okay, it's all going to be a wash, and there will be no one holding the bag, but you all sitting here, okay? I hope that the citizens of Bloomfield become very cognizant as to who you have let into power to manage your town's fiscal needs, and that they are responsible, because if they're not, at the end of the day, my elders at all of these elderly communities here, you're on a fixed income now, my elders, it's going to get tighter, okay? For the single parents that are in my community, it's going to get tighter. For the parents that are two households and that have minimal income, it's going to become even tighter. And for what? For other people to eat good while you find a way to make it happen. Excuse me, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Town Council, Deputy Mayor, I mean, Town Manager, Board of Ed members, Superintendent Thompson, public, Derek Sodden, 10th Fessin Lane. Let me just read something to put everything in perspective, because we are in the times of what we call fake news, because that appears to be where we are right now, with this whole thing in regards to the performance of the town Board of Education. Because I can tell you for a fact that, for those of you that have been around for a while, I can tell you where it was before and what it is now. And so let me just go back, and we're talking about four years from now, but let me just say this, that Dr. Thompson was hired in 2011, so that's about eight years ago, and he's led an academic resurgence within Bloomfield Public Schools, and it's been highlighted by a 17 percentage point increase in the graduation rate at Bloomfield High School. And this was in 2017, so that was six years ago, I mean, six years. But if you can imagine a 17% academic increase in terms of graduation rate, that's almost unheard of, okay? But that's a fact. Now, we may want to say, "No, that's fake news," but that's a fact. Now, let me see, also, in 2011, at that time, the high school was identified by the State Department of Education as one of the lowest performing high schools in the state. So that meant that the town got additional money because of the fact it was low performing. But now, in 2017, Bloomfield High School was recognized by the U.S. News and World Report as one of Connecticut's best high schools in the state. It was ranked 36 at that time. We may want to say that's fake news, but I can also say this, that at the end of the day, it's all about us as a community. Parents, it's good to see parents out here concerned about it, because that's really what it's all about. It's a team approach. The board, the district, they're paid to take care of and educate your children. You are there also to make sure that that happens for your children, and as a result, you definitely want to make amends. It's a team approach. That's what it is. It's not us and them or what have you. It's a team approach. So that's the case. And in terms of the council, now what's happening is that it's being put to you, because the, excuse me, just one last second, I know, I think I'm the last person to speak, so I think-
No, you're not.
Anyway, let me just say this one last thing, that the district has heard the parents' vote, voice. They've talked about increasing staff by 11 teachers, which they haven't done in the past since when I've been on the board, as well as on the town council. So the point is, they've heard your voice, they're trying to address it. Now it's up to you, council, to deal with it, because it's cost money. Are you going to step to the plate and give the town, the parents, and the district what they need to perform? Thank you very much.
My name is Angelique Costa, 18 Glenbriar Drive. I have a child in the Bloomfield school system. We tend to tell people to always look at the budget book, right? So currently, district-wide, students that are meeting or achieving target is, in English, is 40.7%. And for math, it's 28.6%. Think about that when you go home, right? They're targeting for 2019, for math, 53.8% to meet target, and 45.7% to meet target. Nowhere is 100% mentioned here, right, as parents? So I am a bit disappointed with Dr. Thompson. I told him that I was going to come and support him as much as I can with the budget, but looking at the numbers, and I'm still, I'm going to be hopeful, I'm going to try to be very positive, because I guess I hear that he's leaving, so I'm hoping it's not him, it's somebody else. Whoever takes over if he goes, I'm hoping that we can hold that person accountable, that the promises that they put in with ink on paper in the budget, that they will actually fulfill them. It's actually 18 bodies, not 11, I keep hearing 11. It's 18, actually, if I look at Dr. Thompson's note that he emailed to us, it's 18.10. Not sure where the 10 came from, but I'm going to be, 18.10. And the cost for those 18.10 people is $1,135,037. Now, I don't know if this include 401K, benefits, insurance, all those things, but I know the salary, what we have in writing, and I'll give this to you, board, is 18.10 bodies with a total salary of $1,135,047. I am praying, I'm a praying mother, because you've seen us here weeks, months after months, for the last four years. So we're not going anywhere, and we will go back to being the angry black mothers that we're known for, if we don't get what was promised to the principals, not to us, it's the principals and the students. I have a PhD, I'm going to go into school, so I am fine. It's the children's future that I'm thinking about, and it's not just my child, it's every single child in Bloomfield's school system that I am concerned about, that we, the concerned Bloomfield, concerned parents are concerned about, the governance boards that are in both schools are concerned about. So when we hear people talk about it's not in the budget, I don't want Dr. Harris to kick the can down the street anymore, or Dr. Thompson to give us any more empty promises. I want to support you, Dr. Thompson, I want to support you, Mr. Harris, but please fulfill your ink promise to us. Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Waterhouse, Counselor- Counselor McCleary has another question. One question, Counselor. One question.
This is the most important question, because I hear the parents, and one said, "It's unrealistic that this town council would give 11% increase." And I kind of agree with that, right? Because somebody mentioned, it was one of the parents who said, "People are tight," right? So I would like to request from the Board of Ed, if we were to cut and not give you the 11%, where are the cuts coming from? Are those teachers going to be cut? Are the parents, are the students going to be hurt? Where are the cuts coming from? Because I'm very concerned about that, because I do have children in school, and one of the principals, I told you when I met with you, Dr. Thompson, she made a request to me, and I have it in my notes, screenshot, and I didn't see it in the budget. And so, you know, if we don't give the 11%, where are the cuts coming from? And could you produce that to this council?
I can't tell you tonight where the cuts will come from. It's a process that we have to go through, number one, we will prioritize. The priorities will be classrooms, we're going to have, make sure the resources are closest to the students. But it will be a process that we'd have to go through.
Well, I know the mayor told me one question, and I just want to follow up-
Counselor McCleary. Counselor McCleary.
Just to follow up, please? Because it's unrealistic to say it's a process, and you should start that process-
That's the reality. That's the reality. I can't tell you, it's a process. You know, I don't know what you're going to approve. If it's anything short of what we have requested, then we have to go through a process to determine what stays and what's going to go, what's going to go off the, out of the budget, out of the spending plan. But all I can tell you right now is that we were governed by, you know, our principals in terms of ensuring first and foremost, okay, maintaining the integrity of our class size. That's first and foremost. And then we just have to work backwards. But I can't tell you what that process will look like. It's going to be a very comprehensive process if we have to adjust a spending plan to anything short of what we have requested and what has been approved by the board.
So I want to respect the mayor.
Counselor Marshall Neely.
I want to say thank you, and I hope you will start that process very soon, so when we are in deliberations, we can see those cuts, potential cuts, forecasts, just so we can keep it-
Counselor McCleary. Counselor Marshall Neely.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your presentation. I appreciate you coming and giving that detailed presentation. One note I wanted to make is that the schools, combined schools in the town of Bloomfield have currently 2,157 students, 2,157 students. But my question is, if you look on page 69, and this is a clarifying question, the bottom paragraph bullet says that there is an additional reduction in the certified salaries line of $627,000, yada, yada, yada. And it says, "This reduction assumes 15 teacher retirements or resignations, which will be backfilled." That number is 15.
Right. Now, what will happen is, and that's a fair question to ask, we do have to factor in staff that do retire or resign, because in some cases, there's going to be a delta relative to teachers who retired, men and brown, for 30, 35 years, and the difference in that salary that we might hire someone new. Bill, we want to come up and talk a little about that, please. But that's representative, and the difference between the teachers that we anticipate that will be, teachers, I wouldn't say teachers, but staff folks, that we anticipate that will be retiring or resigning, and this happens every year, and what we do is, we look at a pattern, we look at what that looks like from year to year, and that's how we're able to project. We come up with that number of 15.
Okay, because I was hearing 18, I was hearing 11, and-
The 18 are the new staff members that are put into the budget.
Right.
Eleven certified staff members, and eight non-certified, seven non-certified.
Okay. Go ahead.
The paragraph that you're referring to is an assumption that we make every year in terms of the numbers of resignations, retirees, and as Dr. Thompson said, you assume that they've been, if they're retiring, they've been here for quite a while, they're higher up on the salary scale, and the replacement person, teacher, certified teacher, is coming in at a lower scale. So you budget the delta, the difference between the two salaries, as a cost saving. And that's an assumption we make every year, actually, in terms of certified personnel, as well as non-certified personnel.
Okay, thank you for that. So a couple of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Mann.
Yes. I have a follow-up. One of the things I heard, I think it was Mr. Martin brought up the question or the issue of special needs possibly being a profit center for the town, and attracting more special needs, I don't mean to use the word profit center, but that's essentially what it would be, bringing special needs students into our district as a way of raising funds for the district. And I just recalled that that's exactly what you said you were going to do last year. Did you do that, to what extent?
Success to success.
So what extent have you done that?
Well, in terms of the program being so established that other districts are going to be sending their children here, and we would be charging them tuition, that has yet to happen. We just went through our first year, as I mentioned before, there was a lot of learning going on in terms of how to structure that program, how to staff that program, but right now, we have 11-
But right now, we have eleven students, but these are students from Bloomfield, our own students, and what we've done is cost-avoided the tuition as a result of that. I think the element of getting a program that's so well-established that you can go to other districts and say, "If you have a third grader and with a certain disability that we can address in our program, then we would welcome that child in, here's the tuition." And then that is, I think, what you're referring to.
Yes, and that's an ongoing effort by the Board at this point?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With your target?
...who has really been leading the charge with the steps to success program, kind of give you an overview of the program and also where we are now.
So we began planning for this program a year ago, actually, right after last year's budget meetings. And the idea of the program was to set up in district, a special ed program to meet the needs of students with disabilities, students with autism, students with emotionalities, students with behavioral issues, who we felt we could better serve in district. These are students who would have been outplaced, and actually, two of the eleven students that we have in the program now were outplaced and we brought back. The other nine students throughout this school year who are in the program would have been in an out-of-district placement. The program right now is K-8. The students that we did have to place out this year were in the high school level, because we do not have a comparable program on the high school level. So right now, we have eleven students, and I know Mr. Guzman had said the average cost is seventy-five thousand. We have been looking at what the cost would be if we sent the students that we have in district out, and it would run somewhere around a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Because the needs of these students are such that they need one-to-one services, they need paraprofessionals, they need OTPT, speech and language, some mental health counseling. So when we averaged out those students, Mr. Guzman was right, on an average, it's about seventy-five thousand dollars plus transportation. These are really high-cost students that we have at this program.
So that being said, what's your target population for this year?
Right now, it's fifteen is our target population.
Is that reflected in this budget, the revenue?
Do we have fifteen?
No, I think it's- The revenue from the fifteen is-
No, no, no.
Our kids? I thought you were saying you're bringing people in from out of the district.
No, no, we brought two students back who were outplaced last year because we were able to open up the program.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, I just want to, I have a question, but I just want to, someone mentioned before that the council needs to look and see exactly where the town position is going to be and what taxes is going to be. Just want you to know that we've looked at that already. So just to give you an example, on a real estate property assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're looking at an additional three hundred and fifty-one dollars if this budget is passed, the rate is currently with the Board of Ed and the town. On a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar success value, you're looking at an additional five hundred and eighty-five dollars. I can guarantee you this, this is going to hurt a lot of folks. So the council is looking at this. This is not an easy decision, so I just want you to know that. But my question that I have for Mr. Guzman, I'm looking to see that you have teachers that are retiring. But I don't see in the budget, how you factor in for those teachers that are retiring.
How do you mean, how do I factor?
So you're saying that you have an additional eighteen teachers, right? I see in your budget that you're also projecting roughly around fifteen teachers retiring. How do you adjust for that shortfall?
Okay. Number one, the assumption relative to retirees and resignations, that's an assumption, by year end, fiscal year end, right now, we don't have the fifteen. We will probably have the fifteen by year end. Right now, I think we have ten resignations slash retirees. So we're still counting going forward. I think we got a resignation or a retirement notice today. So that is an assumption that we're making. I don't, I'm not too sure about the correlation between the fifteen and the eighteen you're talking about.
No, I'm just looking at, you're saying you're adding in your 2019, 2020 budget, eighteen. Correct. And I'm looking at what you're projecting that will be retiring. I don't see that replacement.
I think what you're referring to is actually a line item in the line item budget. It's on page ninety-four. It's in the section right above the admin section, and it would be the third line up from, it says subtotal district for certified salaries, subtotal for certified salaries teachers. In that line, it shows you that we're proposing that there will be six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars in savings as a result of the delta. In other words, the fact that these retired and resigning teachers are coming, leaving the district at a much higher salary than the teachers that will be replacing them. That said, that said, this is an important aspect of this, the teachers that are replacing them are not the eleven teachers that are in the budget. Those are additional positions. So we're not going to take the retired teachers, we're not proposing to take those retirements and fill them with the eleven positions that have been spoken about. It's going to be an additional eleven point one certified FTE, so full-time equivalent.
Okay. I have another question for Mr. Guzman. I'm looking at the Global Magnet School budget, and I see there's a reduction of the two hundred and fifty-one thousand in certified staff. Could you explain that to me?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm looking at the Global Magnet School budget summary.
Okay.
And I see there's a reduction in certified staff, roughly around two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Yep.
And a reduction in non-certify of eighteen thousand. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. In the previous years, the State Board of Education did not put any restrictions on how the money for the magnet school, Gems in particular, was spent. A lot of the different trips that the kids took internationally were covered by that grant, because that is exactly how the grant was initially written, and the state allowed it. Now we're into it for however many years, and the state has changed its policy. They no longer allow international travel on their grant. So what do we do? We can't just scrap Gems. We have to figure out a way to pay for that model, but also not kill the budget. So we flip-flop. We say, "Okay, Gems, you'll cover, the grant will cover more of the teacher salaries, and we'll cover more of the cost of those international trips." The wash is, is a complete wash. There is no extra money going to Gems. It's just that we, because of the grants and because the state change in policy, we had to figure out a way to still fund Gems, but also not kill the budget.
Okay. My last question. Last year, you mentioned about we're moving the kindergarten from the magnet school to Laurel.
Yes.
And looking at the budget, I don't see the correlation where there's a reduction in one place and you're increasing at Laurel, because if you're moving those students over, I should see a reduction in one place and an increase in-
You have to understand that when you're reducing the kindergarten classes at Whitemans-
Let me just interject for one second.
Sure.
I would see the student population in Laurel didn't increase significantly based on two classrooms.
Well, actually, we did have an increase of two classrooms. However, you have to remember that when you looked at the number of kindergarteners that were at Wintonbury when they had kindergarten classes, that included out-of-district children. So we not only served Bloomfield students, we served students in surrounding towns. But when we transitioned that kindergarten out of Wintonbury and brought them into Laurel, we only serve Bloomfield students there.
So to that point, what's the purpose of these magnet schools in the district if a small percentage of our students are allowed to go there? Why have it? When we look at Gems, for an example, and I'm looking at the numbers, it makes no sense to have two high schools in the town of Bloomfield. It just makes no sense, because we're just setting a few kids there, and how many kids from Bloomfield is going to, I think it's less than ten?
Oh, no, 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 no. You can actually see it inside the school summary pages. It breaks it down in terms of how many students attend based on out-of-district people and students and those in district. And so if I can, just quickly, I can get to that. So if we take, for example, this year, it's page forty-eight. It's forty-eight. You'll see that in the top left-hand corner, that is past and projected enrollment data. You'll see that the Bloomfield is listed in blue, and the other is listed in orange or red. And if you add all those up, those are the number of students that are being served from Bloomfield in Gems.
Not a lot, that's my point. So what is the cost for those students that are going to the Gems that Bloomfield is paying for? What is that cost?
I would have to, I don't have that off the top of my head. It would have to be, so what the budget says-
Okay.
-is that the reclass budget for this year is seven hundred and five thousand, and the proposed budget for next year is four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
So help me understand, with all, we're looking at the middle school, and we're talking, I know we've spoken over the years about the consolidation of the schools, it makes no sense to have two principals, four principals in one school, and now we have Gems. Why so many schools? Are we, as a district, thinking about consolidating some of these schools?
I think I'll refer to the superintendent.
It's a good question. And we attempted to do this three years ago, three or four years, I can't remember exactly when. And we were looking at consolidating commendaries intermediate and also commendaries middle, grades six, seven, and eight. And the question became is, where will our fifth graders go? And we looked to Meta, and come to find out, there was not enough capacity at Meta to accommodate grades three, four, and five. And what we were hoping to do to offset that was to create another magnet school that would be aligned to Gems, that would be grades one through five. And that would take some of the burden student-wise off of Meta. But it never happened. Number one, the state was not prepared to provide the funding for another school, and consequently, there was not enough space at Meta to accommodate the fifth grades. So this is something we will revisit in the, you know, near future, in terms of consolidating commendaries into a typical, traditional middle school.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to let you know, that was, we attempted to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to, there's been quite a bit going on, and I want to wrap up a few loose ends with some of these things. Deputy Mayor Curtin asked about Gems, and, you know, I do understand the, part of the reason for the reduction has to do with grant funding and so forth, but that's the other thing I found, I didn't understand about both Gems and the Wintonbury Early Magnet School, because, for example, in Gems, I think I wrote down here, we see a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar decline essentially in funding, but the grant funding did increase, but only increased by a hundred thousand. So that appears to be a, you know, significant decrease overall, and we also saw the same thing in Wintonbury Early Childhood Magnet School, where we saw a two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar decrease, but then a, only a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar increase in the, in the two grants that are designated for it, so.
So let me tackle Wintonbury first. So as we transition Wintonbury from a pre-K K school, there are some services that don't stay at Wintonbury as a result of that transition, because the type of curriculum is different. A pre-K classroom is not like a kindergarten classroom. So there were some savings as we moved the K classrooms out into Laurel. And we could reduce the cost at Wintonbury based on that. Okay, that's that. In terms of Gems, one of the things we've been working on with the principal, the school principal there is to really think clearly and consolidate the type of experiences that they're giving for the students, and to really work hard at finding more affordable, perhaps, and maybe even prioritize the type of travel that we're doing. So, and she's doing, and she's getting really good at that. So we're going to hope to see continued savings in that area, but that's one of the savings, which is that we are funding less of the travel that we used to. It costs more before, and now it's costing less.
But you have less staff if you travel less. Because I understand, I see, actually, there's an increase in travel cost, and I understand that from your first answer about the grants not funding it. But what I don't understand about the answer to, "We're traveling less or we're doing less kind of travel," is how that translates to staff, because most of the, most of the savings is in staff. And don't get me wrong, I think-
The staff has moved, though, from the general fund to the grant.
And the grant increase is only a small piece of it, and even if you add in twenty-four thousand, which is, or twenty thousand, twenty-four thousand, which is the increase in field trips, it still seems like a decrease, a fairly large decrease.
Of staff, you're saying?
Right, to staff salaries.
We haven't reduced the staff at Gems, as far as I know. Have we reduced, no?
The other thing I wanted to follow up was on the STEPS program, the Steps for Success, because the budget books were a little different this year. When I went to the, when I was going through them and looking at the items, for last year, what we showed, and this is to get to Councilor Mann's point, we showed a savings, I guess, for the STEPS program in 2018, 19 of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. That's what we showed here. Did, so I, first part of the question is, did we realize that? No? Okay. So we had a projection of a savings of two sixty-one, and that didn't happen. So then this year, when I look at the same exhibit, and now the program is additionally established, and I'm looking, now, this does say out-of-district students, but I see, you know, I see essentially the same number, but I don't see a, I mean, where is the STEPS program? Where do I see the savings or the, what you didn't, the two sixty-one equivalent for this year? And finally, just want to, I'll throw out one other thing. I also thought there was not, there's no transportation cost this year, whereas last year, there was a transportation cost.
So I think we do have eleven students in there, and as I said before, two students were out of district when we brought them back, for probably a savings of over two hundred thousand dollars plus transportation. The case is, if we had all eleven out and we brought them in, then we would realize the savings between the out-of-district costs and what the costs are if we educated them in our district. In the future, you know, we might be able to bring more students back. As Mr. Guzman said just recently, we had two students that moved into district that were already in high-cost placements. If there's room in our in-district placements, those would be two students that we would go into PPT meetings and recommend our own program, rather than sending them or having them continue in an out-of-district placement. So this first year, I understand, you know, we thought, or maybe we talked about opening up our own program with eleven, fifteen students, because we have three classrooms now, and that this would be the savings. But again, they weren't actually out. The savings is that we didn't have to send our students out, and that's a better environment for them to be in the district where their siblings are, where their neighbors are, and not be- are, and not be on a long bus ride for an hour in the morning and an hour at night. Instead, they're with us. But I can give you just, because we are looking at numbers and as I said, the approximate cost per student is about $121,000, times 11 students is about 1.3 million. Now, obviously, that would be if we sent them out. So in district, you know, the cost of our staff, our certified staff, our non-certified staff, you know, is around $600,000. So that's what we're saving by not outplacing them, but it's...
And that staff is dedicated to them?
Yeah, we have three teachers, we have six peer professionals, and we have a school counselor who, you know, gives our students daily counseling in small group and in individual. I mean, these are the needs of our students. We have other in-district staff that go over and see our students' PTO T speech, but that's because they are district staff and they go throughout the district, throughout the seven schools.
Thank you.
This has been very fruitful. Oh, I'm going to let Councilor Marshall nearly go. Go ahead. She only asked one question. Everyone else had a couple. Go ahead.
There's a lot going on. I want to travel back to the magnet schools. And there was a statement made with regard to students who, who are now transitioned over from kindergarten into the traditional school as opposed to the magnet school. And I'm looking at the Wintonbury and GEMS. And I want to know what you, what is the difference between the Bloomfield students that go to the magnet school and the cost for that versus the students from out-of-district? And I know that recruiting students from some of the other towns is beneficial for magnet schools. And I want to know what is the difference in those costs? And then I have one other question. The magnet school grant allows us $13,000...
Fifty-four?
$13,000, fifty-four. $54 per student. It also caps how many of the student body of any particular magnet school can come from out-of-district placement, from out-of-district. In our case, in terms of GEM, I'm sorry, in terms of Wintonbury this year, I think the cap is 210 students and they met the cap. So we get 13,000 or their grant, the operating grant, gets over 13,000 per student with a cap of 210 students. And that's how the state figures out what you're going to get. That said, sometimes the state decides to cut the grant like it did last year, part of the way through. And so then we have to adjust, we have to make adjustments. And that's difficult because you create a spending plan in the year before and you start running the district and then come March, there's a cut and then you have to adjust. And so, but that's the reality of working with grants, that's part of it, and you just have to do it. Okay, so my question was, the difference between the students that go to the magnet schools, attend them, who are from Bloomfield versus the cost for the students who are not from Bloomfield?
So there is no cost...
There's no difference?
There's no cost for our students. In other words, we're, the district is not paying the magnet school $13,000 to have Bloomfield students attend. They just attend.
I know that.
Okay. The only thing we get back for that, for the services provided to those 210 students is the $13,000 plus from the state of Connecticut through a magnet school operating grant.
Okay. And my second question statement is probably from, for Superintendent Thompson. And this is with regard to what you were saying about you thought about or researching convincing GEMS? Was that how it was said?
No, it was not GEMS. It was...
Comedy race?
It was comedy race and Meta.
And Meta?
Yes. We went through a process and we couldn't go any further when it was realized that we just did not have the capacity to accommodate the fifth graders that's currently at comedy race intermediate.
Okay. So when I look back, because I've been at Bloomfield for a while, not quite as long as Mr. Harris, but I've been here for a while. And there was this wonderful little school called JP Vincent that actually went up to fifth grade, right? And someone decided, oh no, we're going to take the fifth graders and we're going to move the fifth graders over to comedy race and make two schools or what have you. At the time, I thought this was insane to take the fifth graders from this school and put them into this bigger school because JP Vincent was small enough to accommodate and the teachers were great, they were absolutely great, in this small environment. So now are you saying that, you know, looking at the fifth graders in the school, in the school system, in the school district, you were actually looking at one through five again?
Well, that was, we were considering creating another magnet school that would be aligned to GEMS. That was something that we were considering around the time that we were trying to do some consolidating. That was something for consideration. And as I said earlier, we couldn't go far with that when the state made it very clear to us, there was no funding for that. But going back to what you're alluding to, I mean, back in the day, that was before I was here, when you had to elementary schools, and I'm not quite sure what was the rationale from, moving from your two K5s to the current structure that you have right now, I'm not quite sure, what was the rationale to do restructuring that way? I couldn't answer that.
I was wondering whether or not it was for cost savings?
I wouldn't even speculate because I was not around, so I don't know what was the rationale of folks who were here, you know, and that occurred, went down about, what, seven years ago, eight years ago, maybe longer? I'm not quite sure.
It was longer than that?
Yeah, longer than that, yeah.
Okay. So it would seem like Bloomfield is going to be, or the cat chasing its tail when we were exploring that opportunity? That's just something that I want to spew out.
I'm not sure I would term it that way. It was just unfortunate that we just did not have the space at that time to accommodate that particular grade. So therefore, we couldn't go further. And the state didn't have money to create the other, the K5 that we were, wanted to create at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so because we do have another presentation, I'm going to end with this. For the last four years, the parents have been asking for services for their children. I'm a mom and three of us up here have students in the school system, four of us, right, with grandchildren, five of us, right? So this is very important to us to get it right. So once again, for the last four years before us, the parents have been asking for services for their children and they haven't gotten them. I've heard that over that time, we have still increased salaries, whether it was based on contracts. That was done, I get the fact that we're unioning, we negotiate contracts, and no matter what happens, you have to live by those percentages every year. So I'm a little concerned that this council is now in this situation where we're looking at a 10.98%, 11%, it's all the same, increase to the Board of Ed. I do know that the counselors are not necessarily inclined to give a 10.98% increase to the Board of Ed. We talked about positions last year, that wasn't done. We talked about healthcare costs. The previous council made some suggestions about that as well and that wasn't taken into consideration. We're looking at a $1.6 million shortfall. We're talking about the surplus or the insurance fund that has to be filled. We're also looking at a $1.6 million situation in the health, this fund. Again, my concern is if we deplete this fund when it's needed, when the claims come in and there's no money in the fund, we're going to have to come back to the town to pay those claims. So the same people that are saying that their taxes are high and the same people that are saying that, are you going to write them a check because I can't afford it? Those are the same people that are going to be upset if we go back to them when this fund is depleted. And if I'm correct, projections, if we take the $1.6 million into this budget, the fund will be depleted. So there's some serious concerns about this budget. There's a thought process that if we're going to have 15 teachers retiring and then we're going to backfill that with lower-paying teachers, then some of that savings should be able to go to help to fund the 18.10%, the 18.10 positions, right? So that's one thought, that's a thought there. I heard about whether we're going to phase in positions or whatever it is. I really would suggest, and I think we have suggested this before, Dr. Thompson and School Board, that you go back, that you look at your budget and that you, you make some serious adjustments. But let's be clear, right? Because here is how the council is going to get painted into a wall. And because I'm talking about it now, I'm hoping that you all would be mindful. The council can only do two things. We're going to either pass the budget the way it is or we're going to cut the budget. The school board will then decide how to spend that money. We do not have any control over the school board and how they spend the money. So if we cut their budget and they cut the positions, that's the school board. I just want us to be clear with that. We also have to be mindful because I've been hearing about a ceiling and a floor. What does that mean? This year, whatever we give them is the ceiling. Next year, it becomes the, no, this year, whatever we give them is the ceiling. Next year, it becomes the floor, meaning that we can't go below it. So we have to take all of that into consideration. There's also another presentation coming. The town manager has his budget that he's going to present and for the next month, we're going to have every department coming in here asking for something. And we're going to have to make a decision, a decision that's fiscally responsible. But I want everybody to understand that we realize that our greatest resource in this community is our students and we do not want them harmed in any way. So that's the end of this presentation. I'm going to now ask for a five-minute recess because we have a whole other presentation.
Are you going to let me?
So Dr. Tom, Dr., Dr. Harris? Mr. Harris, I'm going to do two things. I'm going to ask both you and Councilor McCray to be very respectful of what I'm going to say next. I'm going to give you two minutes and I'm going to give Councilor McCray two minutes before he have the coronary down there and then we're going to take a break.
Okay.
Please.
Please let him go.
Councilor McCray, two minutes.
Thank you. It's just, back to the, the teacher retirements where the 15 teachers are being eliminated or potentially being eliminated, are you going to replace those 15 teachers? Is it reflected in here?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. I didn't see it. I'll go back and try to find it offline. That's all I wanted.
Mr. Harris, two minutes, India.
The red herring that's still out there is, and the council is aware of it, the Board of Education is aware of it, the community needs to be aware of it. You keep talking about the fund. There is also a rainy day fund. And what we have, what I presented to you on a Saturday afternoon, Madam Mayor, off-site in another place, we had one of those sit-down, come-to, never mind, meetings, and I presented two scenarios. And two scenarios significantly lowering that 11% all the way down to 6.85, I believe. But there is a rainy day fund that's controlled by the council. The Board of Education is not allowed to develop a pot of money. The council is. There is 18.4 million dollars sitting in a rainy day fund that can be utilized by the council at their bidding. Now, that represents a 19% figure. The feds tell you that you should, you don't need, you need at least 15%. So there's a 4% slide in there that they could help us out. Our insurance consultants, everybody has told, and they sat in the room with us, where we met with the insurance consultants and said, this is a year of aberration. It happens maybe once every seven years. So we're still saying, you have other options.
So as the mayor, once again, because I don't like things hanging out there in the air, I'm going to make a statement and then I'm going to ask our finance chair to answer the question. There is, there was a presentation made and I believe that Deputy Mayor has a copy, the town manager has a copy, and the finance director has a copy. And there was a $1.6 million ask from the Board of Ed. That $1.6 million did not change the 46-point-whatever they're asking for currently. So what that would be is 1.6 plus 46-point-whatever. I understand the fact that there is a rainy day fund, but I believe a rainy day fund should be just that, a rainy day. So once again, if we give the 1.6 now and then we give the 1.6 in 1920 budget, we're still going to be in a hole. So guess what? Another rainy day is going to come. Now, let's be clear, I'm sorry, I'm going to wrap it up in a minute. The governor wants to bring 25% of the teachers' pension plan to the town. The governor wants to take away the car taxes, which is an income boost for the town. There's so many things that the governor wants to take away that I believe a tsunami, I said tsunami, I know it's a tsunami, will come. And if the rainy day fund is depleted, what are we going to do? We're going to put our hands back in your pocket, right? To make sure that we are solid. Now, I'm not saying, please do not get me wrong, I'm not saying that if the school board is in need, that we should not help, but it should just be that help. And I've asked before for us to compromise. But a compromise means both sides are coming together to meet in the middle. If one side is compromising, that's not a compromise. So I'm just going to leave it right there. I'm going to give our finance chair two minutes and then we really need to take a break because I got to handle some personal...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad, I appreciate that. I wasn't going to say anything, but I think it's imperative that I do. The basic thing here is that we've heard several times tonight from the school, from the superintendent, from Mr. Harris, from various people, that the important thing is that the council delivers a number and the school board and the administration take that number and they do careful budgeting with it. We are in a situation now, we are in a situation now because they did not do that. They were given two reductions, which were not huge reductions, that were, including some of the changes we're seeing this year that could have been made two years ago. But now they're coming back and saying, we need to access the rainy day fund and they're being, they're not being completely honest because as the mayor said, a rainy day fund is for a rainy day. It is for an unexpected purpose. And they have known the expected claims were one point, at least 1.6 million larger than they built into their budget. Yes, it is true that the claims for both the town and the Board of Education, for all employees are running what in the industry we call hot this year, we are getting more claims. That's what that fund that we... That's what that fund that we cannot deplete is there to do. In a year where there's $600,000 more of claims, it is to absorb that. And there has been no effort ever until this year for one side or the other to claim that fund as their own. It is a commingled fund. We save the school board money every year because by having a commingled fund, by self-insuring, we save everything, everyone money. We could just say, we're tired of this. Go out and, and buy yourself fully insured medical. Your costs will go up and that will not be a fear to our citizens or our students.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess.